It is 7 o'clock. Thank you for everyone for showing up here this evening. My name is Pete Wintestor for I'm the Chair for the Town of Rock. Once again, I'd like to state that this public informational meeting, publication informational hearing is being hosted by Cooley Frack's LLC in Wood County. Wood County. The town board is here. There's possible quorum here. No action will be taken on any subjects, anything in regards to anything on the agenda for the evening. So with that, we have Tracy Arnold from Wood County, Plenty, uh, Wood County.
Land and Water Conservation.
Land and Water Conservation. And Sean.
Shane.
Shane Wuckerfanning also, right here. So from the county. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to them and they will be conducting the meeting. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Looks like we've got a good turnout. So I'm the county conservationist for Wood County Land and Water. Tracy is my program coordinator. She, one of the programs she handles is the non-metallic reclamation program. That was a program that was brought to us in about the year 2000. The state of Wisconsin drafted some rules on it and that set the tempo as far as how counties handled the, uh, the, the post mining, post mining operation, how things were reclaimed and how they were closed down properly, not to leave an environmental issue or a, uh, an eyesore out there on the landscape. So our department has been running the reclamation portion of the program since the year 2000. I am a Wood County native. I've been living here my entire life. Tracy's also a Wood County native. She's from the Wisconsin Rapids area. I'm from Marshfield. Many of you may know me if you're landowners from this area from the Yellow River Watershed Project years ago. I used to be a project manager for the, for the program. Now I'm the county conservationist for the county. Tracy has spent some time and put together a really good presentation that I think is going to do a really good job answering a lot of questions about what's going to happen with this site at the time that Cooley Frack is kind of wrapping up. And some of the stuff, some of the activities they'll be doing along the way, kind of proactively taking steps towards reclamation throughout the process in phases and stages so that they don't end up with a massive undertaking at the end of the project. So what we'd like to do, just to control the tempo of the meeting a little bit, everybody would have an opportunity to ask questions, voice their concerns, whatever, keep them strictly to reclamation. We don't want to hear about ours operation. We don't want to hear about the specifics of the operation. That has been discussed before. This hearing is specifically on the permitting of this facility for reclamation and how that's going to go about in the future. And so Tracy will in a few minutes do that. The other thing we'll do is if we get to a question answered, try and save most of your questions if they're more complicated towards the end. If you'd like to speak, speak publicly on the record, we'll give you a three minute opportunity to talk for three minutes and then we'll cut you off just because we get a lot of, a lot of folks here tonight. We want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to, to voice their opinion if they'd like to. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy. We'll have a pretty open forum here. If it's a fairly basic question, do you want to take questions or do you just want to save them all till the end?
If it pertains to a slide, we can always go back, but let's try to get through the slides first. There's, I'm going to say 70, but there's a lot of pictures, so don't be like, whoa.
It'll probably take close to a half an hour just to go through the slideshow. I guess we'd prefer to kind of save your questions towards the end.
Cause I, I may get to it in the slideshow too.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I'm going to warn you about slide shows is I hate reading off slides. I don't want to insult your intelligence, but I'm going to because I literally took it word for word from the plan and put it into the PowerPoint slide. I do have the plan here, um, so if you want to look at it, I just figured this would be an easier way than having all of you try to crowd around this little binder to actually put it up on the screen. Okay? So NR 135, that's what we have to follow as a state statute. That's what we follow for mining. Um, so pursuant to NR 135, the hearing shall be conducted as an informational hearing for the purpose of explaining and receiving comments from affected persons on the nature of feasibility and effects of the proposed reclamation. Pursuant to NR 135, the subject matter and testimony in this informational hearing, if it's held separately from any zoning related hearing where the opportunity exists for testimony on reclamation pursuant to paragraph A, I think that says.
A, yup.
Shall be limited to reclamation of the non-metallic mine site. So I think we've kind of figured out this is just reclamation of it. It's not that we don't care about hours of operation, the dust, the noise, it's just we don't have any jurisdiction over it. The only thing we have jurisdiction over is the reclamation because that's what land conservation counts. So it's not that we don't care about it, but we literally can't do anything about it. We can't. There's other people that can, but not us. This is just a chart. This is all the different permits that a non-metallic mining site could have. Not all of them applied, but some of them do. If you blow up that part right there, you can see there's the water, there's air, wetlands, waste measures, we're mine reclamation, so one, one little piece of it. So this is our little section right there. And if you blow that part up, you can see it goes mine reclamation, the DNR. It's a DNR program, but we administer locally. So if you guys have a problem and you're like, hey, something's going on, you call me from Rapids or technically I'm probably out in the field somewhere. You call the office, they say Tracy, go out to this site, something's happening and I get dispatched from Rapids the farthest versus down by Madison. So it's administered locally, but everything goes through DNR. Uh, so what is reclamation? NR 135 oh three, this is the definitions of non-metallic mining. It means to rehab a non-metallic mining site to achieve a land, a specific, uh, land use approved in the reclamation plan. The includes the removal and reuse of the refuge, grading the non-metallic mine site, removal, storage and replacement of topsoil, stabilization of soil conditions, reestablishment of the vegetative cover, control of surface water, groundwater, prevention of environmental pollution, and if practical, the restoration of plant, fish and wildlife habitat. I hate reading off slides and I apologize for it, but I feel it's very important that started like this. So I'm much better with pictures. Three pictures I can sum up reclamation. That's active mining. That's during reclamation. That's after reclamation. That's what I'm in charge of. So I go out every single year to every single one of our permitted sites. Not all counties do that. I pride myself that ever since I started, this is my 11th year that I've worked here, I have walked on every single one of our sites. Not every county does, I do. And I will keep doing it as long as I can. Okay. So this is the actual part about Cooley Frack's. Just so we're all, I mean, I'm pretty sure we all know where this is. But obviously it's in Wood County, Town of Rock. Um, there's MacArthur and V and it's right in that area right there. So the history, hi, come on in. The history of the property, property. Um, in 2009, the public notice went out that Roger Linda Hansen were applying for a non-metallic mining permit on this site. So this is the actual public notice from the paper and to blow it up, what it says is it's a non-metallic mine that will be mined for clean, well-sorted and well-rounded quartz sand. That's what industrial sand is. It's just, that's the longer version of it. That's what it is. Um, the non-metallic mine will be reclaimed in phases occurring on an ongoing basis. All slopes will be topsoil seeded and monitored for, in the main reclamation being an 80 acre lake. Any persons residing within, owning property within our principal's place of business within 300 feet of the mining, the mine site may cross the public informational hearing. So this went out in 2009. So since 2009, I have been going to the site. There's not really any activity out there, but every single year I went by it to make sure, looked at it, okay, you know, you got their sign up, there's a little sign. I think right now it's probably down. It's been since 2009, so it's probably eroded and blew away by now. But it is, it was permitted since 2009. Um, since 2009, there's been a $50 inactive fee. What that means is they have a valid permit, but there's no mining, there's no excavation of actual mineral out of there. So they can go down to the $50 inactive fee. We don't currently have any financial assurance on place, in place right now because there's nothing to reclaim. What we do have is a signature from the permit holder that states that before they start any mining, 15 days prior to that, they have to have adequate financial assurance in our possession and approved before they can start mining. So within 15, like currently, right now, if the company and Carbo has it right now, so if Carbo gave me financial assurance today, they could start mining within 15 days on this site right now because there's already a valid permit on that site. So in 2011, Carbo Ceramics came and they requested a copy of the reclamation plan. So the reclamation plan, the town contacts and photos of the site were mailed to them. Then in 2012, the permit was transferred over to Carbo Ceramics. Then in 2018, um, Cooley Frack came, they sat down with both Shane and I in our office. They went through the reclamation, the draft reclamation plan, kind of what they were, what they were planning, what they, what we wanted, what we expected, had a sit-down meeting with them to kind of, and it was a pretty good draft at that point, but they actually submitted the draft end of September. So in between all of our other job duties, um, by November 2nd, we were able to review the whole entire plan and it's, Shane, if you want to grab one of those binders out. It's not a little plan, it's a pretty intense plan. Um, speaking from, I have looked at all the reclamation plans that have come in since 2007 into our office. This is a pretty complex plan. Some of them I call blue crayon joints because let's be honest, in Wood County, the water table is pretty high. So if you dig a hole, there's a good chance it's going to fill up with water. So what I call some of our plans that we get is blue crayon joints where they draw a circle and they color it in with blue and they call it a lake. This one is not that. This is a very developed plan. So the first draft came through, um, there were some edits and clarifications that we had. This is a list, it's not a complete list. This is a list that we wanted more information on before we felt comfortable sending it out for public notice. Um, just a couple of the things we wanted, um, the identify the location of the topsoil stockpiles and the narrative. Um, we wanted to know where that high cap well in the narrative was and on the maps. They said that they may have one. We want to know where it is. Um, there was some, the food grade flakewit, we wanted to know what kind they were using. Um, let's see, the wet plant was enclosed in a building structure. It said it one time in there and we were like, okay, wait a minute, like how big is this building? We wanted more information. So this is just some of the things that we, we needed more information on. So they came back, the second draft of the plan, which I also have here, um, came back beginning of November. We reviewed that one and then November 19th, we sent that one back for more edits, more clarifications. There was less of them, but there was still stuff that we had questions on. So this was the second, um, the list, it's not a complete list, but it's, it's pretty much all there. The biggest one that I was concerned about was this criteria to evaluate reclamation success. That's my big one. I want to know when you, when that plan is going to consider it's reclaimed so that everybody knows it's not Tracy looking at it and saying, yeah, you're good. Shane coming out there and saying, nope, that's not it. I want a number. I want it to say it's going to be 70% vegetative cover, 80% vegetative cover, whatever it is to make sure that that soil is going to stay in place, that they're not just going to, you know, throw seed, it's going to come up one year and it's going to be gone. It has to be established vegetative cover. That's what I want to know. So then the third draft of the plan comes in and I do have it with me and that's what all of these pictures and stuff that we'll get to, they all come from this third plan. At that time, we felt that, um, that it was a complete plan and we were going to move forward with, um, the public notice. Um, at that time Shane, who's an engineer, he reviewed it, I reviewed it. We have another engineer in the office that he also took a look at it. So there was a lot of people in our office that did take a look at that plan. So the public notice was published on, was published on the 27th. Um, Cooley Frack immediately requested a public hearing. Any of you that were within that 300 foot boundary could have. Cooley Frack was proactive and they said, let's just get it scheduled because they knew you guys were going to have questions. Totally, it made sense to me. So I said, all right, let's go ahead. Um, got ahold of Pete. We got the, um, town hall scheduled and that's where we are at today. This was the public, um, notice that went out in the papers. Um, and then that part, this is the shortened version of that well-sorted, well-rounded sand. It's for industrial sand. It means exactly the same thing. Um, same thing on this, it's going to be in phases occurring on an ongoing basis. All slopes will be topsoil seeded, monitored, and then with the final reclamation being an emergent wetland surrounded by a shallow open water lake. This is the same thing from the very first public hearing that anybody within 300 feet can request a public hearing. Cooley Frack took care of that for you. So these are the plans from the, or these are the maps from the actual plan. If you want to look at the plan, I have it with me, but I just figured rather than all of you crowd around a little binder, there it is. So figure one is just the site location. You can see it right there. Um, figure two is the mining parcels. So you got V and MacArthur. There's figure three with adjacent parcels and all those little yellow dots are properties where they have wells. And that was in the legend on there, but I, when I blew that picture up, that legend went away. Um, figure four is just the topo and the drainage. You can see there's actually two watersheds that splits right down the middle, which is kind of a unique for one of our mine sites. It's kind of a, a neat feature. There's some contours. These are the test, uh, figure six is the test boring locations. So each one of those spots, they did, they did a bore hole to see exactly where the stand was. How much overburden are they going to have to get rid of before they can actually get to the stand that they want? So in all those locations, they have a pretty good idea of what that site contains because of these bore holes right here. This was, uh, figure seven is the wetlands. The wetlands was done by a third party, um, company. They came in twice, um, and you'll notice that in the plans, the first time I looked at it, I was like, what the heck? But this part right here was added afterwards. So that's why there's two different, um, wetland delineations that were done. So this is the wetlands that they came up with. I feel like the delineations that the company did, did a very good job at it. They, they knew what they were doing. Um, figure eight is setbacks and buffers. Um, figure nine is the different soil types. 10 is the groundwater contours. You can see that groundwater divided right through the middle. This is the different phases that they have that you can see one goes here and then it kind of goes up around this way and it comes back up. Now in the financial assurance, um, right now they included figure 13, or phase 13. And I was like, okay, now hold on. If you're telling people that you're going to go in an order and you include number 13 and number one, that doesn't make any sense. The reason that they included number 13 in financial assurance figures was because the trucks are going to come in and out, and there's another map coming up here soon. The trucks are going to go in and out of 13. So it's not necessarily active mining, like where you think an excavator is going in and mining, but the trucks are going to be running back and forth. So in my mind, that's considered active mining because it's not soil, it's not topsoil, it's not seeded and it's not established. If you're running trucks on it, I'm counting it. I'm in charge of that now. Um, figure 12 is the processing area. So you have V coming up right here. And then this is the entrance road. Um, you can see it, there's a stockpile right here, stand, there's some right here. This is that little road that goes into the, um, phase 13. So it's going to, you're going to bring sand up here and then you're going to keep going. This is the actual plant part right here. That yellow dot is the, um, high cap well, which I'll get to, there's on the slide coming up. But that yellow dot, that's what that is. Um, this is the, figure 13 is what the final reclaimed topo is going to look like. So it'll be an 88 open water lake, um, and 34 acres are slopes and the wetlands are going to be on that. And then you'll notice there's a black line across here, which is that. So that's the cross section of it from A to A. Um, so you'll notice on here, this top part is kind of the slash, that's the overburden that they're going to get, they're going to pull that off in order to get to the sand that they want to mine. So they have to deal with that. A lot of that goes into the berms, um, that are going to go around as noise barriers, things like that. Um, and then it'll be used for reclamation as they put it back on. Um, this part right here, this part, the black part is where the mine bottom, like the bottom of the floor is going to be. Once they reclaim it, the bottom of the floor is going to look like this one. So it's got a little bit of depth, you know, some cool features on the bottom. They don't have to do that. Um, I thought it was kind of unique that they did it, maybe some fish habitat, they put fish in there, whatever they happen to do with it. Um, but this is the cross section. These black lines here are where those bore holes went down to tell them exactly where the material is that they want. So some key points that I pulled out of that plan that I thought were important, it's not all of them, but as someone that has reviewed quite a few plans and I'm in charge of six and seven different mine sites in Wood County right now, these are things that if I were living next to it, I would want to know about. So the site consists of 173.5 acres, um, exfol, or proposed excavation is 122, 11 acres for that processing plant. So that picture that had the road with the different stockpile, that's going to be like the 11 acre part. Um, 14 phases of mining. The, um, lifetime approximate is a 12 to 20 years based on market conditions. Most of the charts in that plan are 12 years. Now you're like, where did the 20 come from? One of the, um, cultural and it was a cultural historic resources is that the one that, I can't remember. It was a cultural resource thing. It was out for 20 years. So the plan said 12, but this little piece of paper said 20 and I said, hold on. I said, you gotta get those to match. So what they did was they updated the actual plan for 12 to 20. Obviously it's based on market conditions. All of my guys, and I call them my guys, but all of the permitted, all of the permit holders, they always say, well, it depends on market conditions and it, it does. Um, so 12, 20 years, I think it's going to be more towards 12, but that's just an assumption on my part. Um, the final site reclamation use is for an emergent wetland surrounded by a shallow open water lake. The area of mine property unreclaimed at any one time during the estimated 12, 20 years life of the mine would be the acreage of two active acreage, or two active phases plus the wet plant and then the stormwater basins. So this is what they're saying, I'm going to have financial assurance on. So it'd be like two phases and then it would be the 11 acres for the plant and then the stormwater, all that stuff, I have, not me, the county has financial assurance. What that means, and I threw, threw that out a lot, I should explain what that means. What that means is the county has a bond or a letter of credit or actual money that we hold on to. And if it's a bond or something like that, that the county can go and seize that funds and we've done it. We just did it for completion. So completion had just, for example, they had three mine sites. They went belly up. The county went and contacted the bank down in Texas and we are holding their financial assurance right now. So we have money to go reclaim those sites once the whole bankruptcy legal stuff gets cleared up. So hopefully it'll be soon, but it's been a while already. Um, but we do have that money to fix those sites. Um, the former residence with barn and outbuildings on the northwest parcel of the mine property is planned to use as the office, residence and machine storage area. So here's MacArthur and here's V. So that area right there is going to kind of be the office, the residence, the machine shed area. Um, access to the mine and processing area will be on the driveway west of the processing area of, uh, V. So there's V right there and this area right there is how you're going to have access to the site. Um, the driveway is going to be paved and cut clean using enclosed road sweepers, which we've had very good luck with. Um, if there's stuff on the roads, yes, it's a county highway, you can call county highway. First thing county highway is going to do is they're going to call me. So just call me. I'll save you stuff, just call me. And I will contact them and be like, hey, come on, let's get this cleaned up and look thing up. Um, the paved portion of the driveway is going to remain in place for landowner access so that it's going to be paved and it's going to stay there. Uh, road traffic, so the trucks will travel north. So here's that yellow dot is the site where we're coming in and out. And then we're going to go a mile and a half, or sorry, a mile, 1.1 miles up on V. Then they're going to turn right and go up on 10 into Marshfield. And Shane, did you have something about V that you wanted to add?
Um, from, from the highway standpoint, um, the highway department or commissioner normally negotiates with the sand mining company to pay royalties for road use. That's a typical thing in Wood County. In this particular case, uh, Cooley Frack has stepped up and said that they will pay to have the county highway department, uh, recondition that road, reconstruct that section of road up to state highway condition. So, uh, they will not be paying a royalty to the county in lieu of reconstructing that section of road to state standards. So it will be constructed just like highway 10. So it will be able to withstand the wear and tear and the abuse that it'll take without deteriorating.
When will this repair be done at the end of this road for 20 year period?
No, it'll be done kind of front because it's going to receive.
It's going to have to be, uh, destroyed or, or damaged before.
The county highway will be doing the construction, the county highway department.
I don't know the exact year of it, but they, the county highway had already planned to do highway V, but it was like the lower section of it. So what they did was they flip-flopped it to get this part done with Cooley supplying the extra money. Exactly what date that's going to happen, do you?
It was originally scheduled for 2020 and they'll be doing it next year. Good. 2019.
What about usage?
Is it going to be a, is it going to be an ongoing thing as, as the damage, because as the usage and the damage, you know, continues?
Well, as Shane said, it will be upgraded to highway standards. So it'll be designed to take that kind of order of terror.
You won't see the deterioration. Do you see that kind of deterioration on highway 10? Those are designed for 30 year life with dump truck in semi-lowed traffic. So.
So there's an estimated three to four trucks will be used to, for transport. Um, there's multiple stormwater, um, treatment ponds that will be located on a site with the ability to control 100 year rain event, or 100 year 24 hour rain event. Now, do you want to explain the 100 year thing or do you want me to?
Sure, I guess. So theoretically, once every 100 years, you'll get a, uh, you got a 1% chance or one in 100 years, you're supposed to get a storm with the intensity where, um, you're getting about a, I think it's a 6.2 inch rain over a 24 hour period. We, with all these weird weather patterns we've had, um, we've actually had three, three 500 year storms in the last, uh, 10 years. So, but that's with weather pa, patterns and historically how long they've been keeping track of the weather, that would be a typical.
This is a question that we get all the time in our office. That's why I just was taking the opportunity to, to tell you that it has nothing to do with the 100 year. It's the chances of it and the actual amount of rain that you're getting. So we hear all the time like, oh, there's another one of those 100 years. We already had those like three times this year. It doesn't have anything to do with that. Um, so the wash plan will operate on a closed loop system. Um, processed water will not be dischargeded offsite. The high cap well, I know this interests a lot of you. Um, the high cap well is proposed to be located on a mine site as part of the wash water plant construction, there's that yellow dot again. Um, that was one of the edits that we had to make in one of their drafts. So, yep.
Uh, the original plan said there may be, so now is there going to be a high capacity well yesterday?
I'll get to it.
Thank you.
Um, the wastewater from the wet plant will flow into the clarification tank, clear water, um, or sorry, clean water will then be recirculated to the wet plant, um, greatly reducing the volume of water pumped from the onsite high cap well. So if, or only in the event that the surface water withdrawal is not capable of producing the anticipated processing requirement of 250 gallons a minute, will they be turning on that high cap well to, um, get enough water? So if the well is needed for processing, a non-coorable high cap well permit, um, approval request will be submitted to the DNR. And then if it gets approved, then they'll submit it to us. So they have to submit that to DNR and then the biologists that have all of that data on all the groundwater and where it's at, how much can be pumped out, they approve it. So I, there's, and there's a lot of talk about high cap wells, especially in the central sands area. You guys aren't technically in the central sands area, but I'm sure you've heard a lot about it. So if you have questions about that, the DNR is that portion of this part of the permits. Okay? Um, I don't know, do you have the high cap well person for our county? I can't even talk right now. We can get him if I.
Yeah. I, it actually might be Adam.
Schuhman?
Schuhman because he's in the well water section.
Okay.
But one, one point I'd like to add here quickly is, is that what you need to keep in mind is that this high capacity well, if they choose to put one in or the need is there down the. if they choose to put one in or the need is there down the road to put one in, is not going to completely supply that wet facility to operate. It's going to supplement shortages of utilizing water that's onsite and recirculating that. So it's not like it's going to be pumping two hundred and fifty thousand gallons daily like they do when they pivot irrigate on sand ground to grow crops. It's going to be really a supplementary thing if needed. Um, so it's, it's, and they're being upfront by putting it on the plan and the map that it may be needed. But if it's not, it may never get built or never put in.
Personally, if I were putting one of these plants in, I would not put that much money into a wash plant without having a high cap well onsite. Even if I never ever used it, I'd still have one there. I know that's not what you maybe want to hear, but I wouldn't do it without one. Even if I never ever turned it on, I'd still drill one. Um, flocculent, I know a lot of you are concerned about the flocculent part. What flocculants is, um, so food grade flocculent may be needed to um, coagulate instead of ultra fine material from the water. So this is what it comes out looking at after you wash the fines off of the sand. So the particles of sand that they want, it's got the clay and the silt and they want that all off of there. So what they have to do is they have to wash it. So in order for them to recycle as much water as they can, they have to get all of that ultra fine material off. So they add the flocculent to it. It's a food grade flocculent. They add it, they kind of coagulates and then they can use this stuff. Um, they pu- after a while it settles in the bottom and they can pull it back out and they can use that stuff for reclamation. Um, and then they get the water that looks like that and then they can reuse that. So one of the things that we asked for was in the edits, was in the plan, we want to know which chemicals they were using. So these are the two chemicals that they're going to use. Um, this was the safety data sheets that they gave to us. Um, I don't have a lot of experience it, with it. So what I did is I talked to our county health department. I talked to the DNR, um, Roberta Wells, who was here, um, Zoe Mc- McManamah, um, I talked to her too. She's the state hydrologist. Um, and then a lot of different counties out in the western part of the state that deal a lot more with frac sand. We have it here, but not like the western part of the state. They have a lot more experience with that. So what I did is I talked to them about it too. They all use very similar stuff, if not the same exact stuff, um, that they have. One of the things that the health department told me to do was contact the wastewater treatment facility. And I contacted the one in Rapids and they said they actually use the same kind of food grade flocculent in your drinking water to settle out the iron fines. So if the fines on the iron, it sinks to the bottom and they can pull that out. So the same kind of stuff that they're using, they actually have in our drinking water already. Uh, the excavation, crushing, washing stages will operate during the spring, summer and fall seasons, so April through November. Um, while the transport stage will operate the entire year. This is ninety-five percent of our sites. And usually it doesn't rain in January in Wisconsin, but sometimes it does apparently. Um, so what they do is they stockpile through the time or through the spring, summer, fall. So that they have these stockpiles and then they can keep hauling it throughout the whole entire year. So that's why they're running the, the certain stages, these stages. That's why they're running them for three seasons and then they shut down the wet plant. Otherwise it's going to freeze. Um, and then the transport can keep going. Uh, the proposed final mine, the proposed fi- final mine floor elevation um, at the site will be one thousand one hundred and seventy-five feet and groundwater will likely be encountered during mining excavations. If I think of the eighty or sixty-seven sites that we have, I bet you there's three that are not in groundwater. There's, I think there's only three and one of them we just closed up. So there may only be two right now. In Wood County, we have a really high groundwater um, table. You're going to dig a hole, even if you dig a hole for your garden and put a, you know, post in, there's a good chance you're probably going to hit water. I live in Rudolph, so I don't even have to dig. It's just sitting there because it's clay. Um, so when excavation is below groundwater, what they're going to do is they pump it from this cell that they're into and they pump it over to this cell and then they just keep working their way around. So it stays onsite. Um, this is another, and I have the contact information for this guy. This is another DNR permit. It's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So that's another whole plan that they have to have. Before they start mining, they have to have all these steps in place. This is another one of their things. It just had it in the plan, so I put it in there. Um, Brad Johnson's up in Wausau. He comes through Wood County at least a couple of times, probably at least once a week, um, if not more. And if there's an issue, he comes out immediately. He, we talk at least three times a week. Um, so internet access um, to the groundwater elevation data will be available to Wood County. Um, the baseline samples from the monitoring wells will be collected prior to mining. They're being collected right now. So this rain that we got today, you're probably going to be able to see it. Um, the other thing is I think it started in September is when they, September is when they sunk the monitoring wells, um, in there or the probes in there so that we started, we've been, not we, they've been collecting data since September and they gave Wood County access to all of it. They did not have to do that, but they did. And Shane and I are water geeks, so we were like, ooh, let's look at this. So we think it's kind of cool to look at. And I do have a, the chart, I'll show you in a minute. Um, so the results of the groundwater monitoring analysis will be included in the annual site report. Um, so this is what it looks like. Um, but every single year, they're going to give us more stuff at any time. If we're like, hey, we want to see what this looks like right now. It just rained. We want to see it going up. We can request it and they'll give it to us. Which they don't have to, but they did. So this um, is, lines up here are the different monitoring or the probes. And then down here is precipitation. So you can see if we got, it looks like there in September, we got some rain, maybe some snow. You can see how that groundwater jumps up. This one right here was they pulled a probe out to do some kind of maintenance on it or something. Yeah? Um, so that's why that, there's a big dip right there. They wanted to make sure that I said that. But so the graph up here is what groundwater table is doing and down here is the precipitation. So you can see it right, right together. Um, owners of portable, uh, potable wells within one quarter mile of the mine site will be offered groundwater sample collection analysis for the same list of parameters as part of the baseline testing. There's a whole list of parameters um, that they said that they would be testing these monitoring wells for. So if something was getting out of control, we would know about it right away. Um, they're offering to certain landowners, which they will be contacted, I'm assuming. Um, the same parameters that they're testing their own wells for. That's not something they have to do as far as reclamation. Um, they're doing that. If as far as a different permit, that's a different story, but as far as reclamation, that's something that is above and beyond. Um, non-markable fines will be dewatered, stockpiled in return for the mine, um, for use in reclamation. That's one of the requirements in NR one thirty-five. That's what we want them to do. We don't want them hauling stuff from a different site. If you have it there, use it for reclamation. That's what we want you to do. Uh, the shoreline of the lake will be contoured to a ten to one slope to a depth of approximately two feet below and five feet above the average water level. So do you want to engineer talk this or do you want me to?
I guess I can give it a shot. So the average high water table is going to be where that water, groundwater level um, is for the majority of the year. It's going to fluctuate. It's going to go down during the dry months in the summer. It's going to go back up in the, in the fall and the spring when we start to get a lot of rain events and recharge back into the water table. But so basically what they're saying is we determine where that ordinary high watermark is and then these depths would correspond to that elevation. And we're talking in terms of datum elevation, which is true ground elevation in relation to datum, which is zero. And so when she showed that slide that had the eleven seventy-five as the, was that the water table level? That's the kind of the ord- was that the water table or bottom?
I don't have a go back.
But at any rate, whatever we establish that ordinary water level at, that these uh, depths would, would be based off of that elevation.
So the, in non-engineering terms, um, the ten to one, so it's ten feet over, one feet down, ten feet over, one feet down. So two feet below, so that's twenty feet into the water. And then the five feet, so it's also five feet above the water. And their one thirty-five, what I can require is three to one, six feet into the water. That's all I can require. So the fact that they're going to go five feet below and two feet above, that's seventy extra feet that I, I can't, that's above and beyond what I can require them. Ten to one is a pretty gentle slope. Um, all the other mine site boundaries will have a maximum final grade of three to one. Um, this is some of the baseline requirements for the um, wetland restoration. This is the stuff that I really am concerned about. Um, I'm concerned about it all, but this is before I can sign off on it, before I'm going to put my name on there and say, you're done and I'm going to release the financial assurance. This is, this is the kind of stuff that I have to see out there. So the seed mix shall contain a minimum of fifteen species, including four native wetland for- forbs, eight native wetland sedges. Um, the seed mix shall contain or consist of at least forty percent sedges by weight with a maximum of twenty percent or twenty-five percent grasses by weight. All seed shall be provided on a pure live seed basis. Wetland seed mixes will be selected to match the soil conditions on the site to be planted. And wetlands shall be seeded using a seeder designed for handling wetland seeds and planting them evenly and efficiently. Now that else sounds good and I know plants fairly well, but I don't know that well. So one of the things, one of the edits that I made them put in their plan was prove it to me. I want, I want the actual seed mix. I want the reports of when you did it. I want the seed bag. I want the receipts of what you put on there. So this is the stuff, the application rates, the methods that you use. I want to be out there when you're doing it. Sometimes they just throw seed on a site that's like this. It's literally falling down. They threw seed on it. What? No, that's not going to cut it. So that's one of the things that I take, um, take account. And the other thing is the percent cover. So then I put the percent cover and all this data I have into an Excel spreadsheet and I'm able to literally compute that percentage. So if that percentage doesn't come back at seventy percent, I'm not signing off. This would be good stuff. This is like, okay, like there's definitely some established vegetative cover in there. That soil is not going to go anywhere. It's going to stay there. Yep.
Can I, um, on the seeding and the vegetative cover, I'd just like to add that. So from the county perspective, we're looking for a stable site when it's done. We want vegetative cover that is established and, and will stay vegetative covered. We are basically told by the company what species and what type of planting that they want to do. And that's what we hold them accountable on. So these guys could have got by with Kentucky bluegrass and, you know, red creeping red fescue and so forth because that would stabilize a site. But of the nature of this project, when it's all said and done, being a lake and a wetland enhancement and all that, they chose to go with wetland species and some prairie and native stuff. Not invasives, not uh, just common grass seed type stuff. I can tell you, it's very difficult to get these types of species established. So they're going to have to work at it really hard. But they're willing to do that. Um, and um, so, and those species are very expensive to get established. You, have any of you ever gone out, bought some prairie seed at a hundred and ten dollars a, for four ounces? You can go to the bag, you can go to the hardware store and get a bag, a twenty pound bag of grass seed for ten dollars or fifteen dollars. So, um, they put it in their plan that way. So we made them clarify what they felt establishment meant and we're going to hold them to that. So I just wanted to make that point. They, again, going above and beyond what the county or the state is requiring here for the final line product.
Um, you heard me talk a little bit when we were talking about the um, the probes in the monitoring wells, the different end of year reports. This is all stuff that they said they were going to give us. Some of this stuff is required, some of it's not. Um, so the extent of current mining development, um, the existing groundwater elevation recorded quarterly, an updated groundwater elevation map, um, the results of the following, the groundwater analysis, um, the inspections on the stormwater site, um, so, uh, soil management, monitoring activities, the vegetative, what they've gotten um, to establish. And then, um, let's see what else. Oh, and then reevaluate financial assurance based on that year's, um, the past year's operations. So this is the stuff that Cooley Frack is going to provide us. This is the stuff that I do for every single person regardless. So every single year, I walk every single site. So my little lighters go really fast in November and I walk every single site with a GPS unit. Um, what I do when I'm out there is I'm verifying that they're within their approved reclamation plan. So if I walk around and I'm like, whoa, that part right there is not in their plan. All right, we're going to stop right there. We're going to call them and be like, come meet me out here onsite. I want to know why you're over here and it's not in your plan. And I'm probably going to shut them down right there. We've done it before. Some things are easily remedied, some things aren't. So it depends on what we are, what we're doing. Now I'm saying I go out to a site visit annually. If there's a concern, if there's a complaint that comes in, I go out there immediately. So it's not that I'm only going to go here once. I do have a lot of stuff on my plate, but if somebody calls about any of my programs, I go out onsite and I figure out what's going on. Um, a GPS, they activate acreage and document the whole thing with photos. Our IT department hates me because I have a catalog of photos. And there was some of the neighbors, where are they? Yeah, I knew I saw these. That, um, they, they have come in and looked at my computer about the database that I have for every single one of our sites. So if any of you want to see what I have, make an appointment beforehand just to make sure that I'm in there because I get called out and I'm out. But if you tell me you're coming, I will gladly show you any of the stuff. Some of the neighbors, can you raise your hand if you've seen that? There's at least three of you guys. So if you're interested in it, I'm like, okay, what is she really talking about? Ask one of those people because they came in and they sat right behind me on my computer. And I showed them all the stuff that I have for everybody's site. Um, another thing that I do is I visually check um, for solid waste dumping issues, erosion runoff. Um, some of that stuff is DNR stuff, but as long as I'm out there and I'm walking around the entire site, if I see a hot water heater, well, that doesn't look right. So one is what I'm going to do is I'm going to contact um, the permit holder because sometimes they don't even know it's out there. I think it was twenty twelve. There was a huge hailstorm that went through Rapids. I don't know if it hit Marshfield too, but it hit Rapids. And a bunch of the out of state contractors came, ripped off everybody's roofs. Hey, there's a hole. Let's throw it in there. So all of my mine sites had shingles everywhere and my permit holders didn't even know it was there. So now they get to pick up the tab to take all of that back out and pay for it for all the people that just left state. So I check it all the time. I, all the time I'm checking them. I found a boat one time. That was my biggest one I've found so far. It wasn't usable anymore. I probably drove it home. Um, I also send each of the permit holders um, maps using GIS, which I showed you a picture of, um, along with the permit fee and financial assurance information. As the permit fees come in, I verify that it is the correct amount and I process the permit fees for each site as they're submitted. Same thing with financial assurance as they come through. Nine out of ten times, the permit holders are like, just talk to the bank. So I'm talking to banks all over the county, some out of state, and I'm saying, this is what I need. The biggest thing is I need it to say that Wood County has the authority to seize those funds. So if I go in there with a little piece of paper that says, I have this much money and I go up to a bank and say, give me this money, it can work. But if I go in there with a letter from corporation counsel that says this state's Wood County has the authority to seize the funds, they give me money. Not me, the county. Um, this is an example. This is the highway department. This is what every single one of our permit holders get. So this red line right here is literally where I walked with the GPS unit. I go up and down and around and over trees and all kinds of stuff. Um, and then you see these little spots right here. That's the roads. That's another thing that I walk. Um, every single one of our properties or every permits have, get a map like this. This is an example of what the permit fee sheet looks like. Um, so you'll have whatever, based on the acreage, so like one to five acres is three hundred and seventy-five and it goes six to ten, eleven to fifteen, it goes up. Um, so what we consider active is any roads and then active unreclaimed. So even if you're literally not scooping and excavating out of the ground and taking material out, you're just driving a truck over it, that's not reclaimed. I'm counting that. Um, so then we total up the acreage and then the financial assurance currently right now in Wood County is at four thousand five hundred dollars an acre. It's across the board. Um, now with Cooley Frack, because they have a wet plant onsite, that's an additional amount of money. We did the same thing with um, Hanson Sand Products in town of Hanson on Oakin Grant. Um, just, this is um, some contact, contact information. Roberta was here at that last one. I don't want to say the last meeting because I know you guys have had more meetings. The last one that I was at, Roberta was the one that was here. She's the industrial sand contact. She also recently just gained the title of non-metallic mining coordinator. So she's your person in DNR to ask questions to. Um, Brad Johnson, he is a stormwater guy. Um, he's up in Wausau. He does come through Wood County quite often. Um, so every site that I go to, he goes to also, but he looks for different stuff. We usually keep each other in contact. Like, hey, go out to this site next time you're around. Look at the west side over in the corner and we send each other pictures. And we send each other pictures, we're, we're in contact constantly. Um, Jared Nelson, um, he's a new, I haven't met him yet, but he's a new guy, um, with the air quality stuff, so if you have, um, industrial sand air regulation-type questions, Jared's the guy to answer. He covers, um, Wood County. And then there's me, there's Shane, and questions.
So before we jump-
Yes, then we should open up to you guys.
Before we jump right into questions, Cooley Frack might wanna say a few words. And then, can I just quickly, just so we know, have a real quick raise of hands of people that may actually have questions? Cool, if there's a whole bunch of you that are gonna wanna ask questions, we're gonna wanna limit to three minutes, okay? So, anybody that wants to ask a question, um, can you please raise your hand? So, three, six, six or seven, not too bad.
Let's go for it.
Okay. So we're just gonna, we're not gonna get too crazy on the timeline thing, but, um, if a whole bunch of questions start getting arise, then we may have to limit the timeline.
Do you, either one of you two wanna say anything that we, or any of you wanna say anything that we missed?
Well, yeah, I'm definitely, um, I just wanna tell everybody, you know, we're going beyond what we have to do, just because we take pride in the land, you know? I grew up hunting ducks, and I moved to this area out of Iowa because of the fantastic resource that we have in Wisconsin. So it really comes from the heart that we're doing this, and really taking pride in what we're gonna create. That's really the only thing I have to say, that's why we go on beyond, just making a lake that's pretty much useless. This is gonna be a live lake, that, uh, it's gonna be a recreational lake for the future. And, and the other thing, this is not part of the reclamation plan, but, you know, we wanna have discussions with the people in the town, so we get an idea of how you want this finally developed. This is not part of reclamation, but part of developing it into more than just, um, a wetland area. Shelters, picnic tables, stuff like that. So we actually have a, uh, rock park when we're done. But that's not part of reclamation, but it's something that we're really looking forward to sitting down and, and working with you, deciding what you want, you know, this to look like when we're all done, you want a boat ramp, you want, you know, a walk-around area, you know, I, I have my vision of what I think would be cool, to have a biking, a rock hiking area all the way around the lake, stuff like that.
I'm Kenny Crick, I'm President Cooley Frack's hand. I just wanna take the opportunity to express my appreciation for Shane and Tracy. Uh, they do a fabulous job. Uh, we've worked with other regulatory agencies, other counties. I have not personally encountered a more professional group of people, well-organized, the county as a whole, and really appreciate working with them, we appreciate all of their feedback, all of their input. They do a fabulous job.
Alright, questions? Anybody, yeah?
People in the Starport ninety-nine sixty-two Cary North Road, Pittsville. The financial insurance bond that you're stating that the county holds, is that on the entire site, the one hundred and seventy-three point five acres, or is that just on the ones that are, like, the, the wash plant and the two that are open, so it'd be like the forty-one acres total?
Yep, um, great question. It's just on what I consider active. So like, this site, if this site was approved for a hundred and sixty acres, um, that is not a hundred and sixty acres. So whenever I walk around, and then I click on the computer and the GPS will come up, and it'll say, it's thirty-six point seven acres, and then I do the roads, maybe this one is a point two and that one's a point one, I add that to it, and that's what their financial assurance is for the acreages. And then the wet plant, we add on to Cooley Frack. It's like a à la carte menu kinda thing that we add on for the industrial sand people.
So, so in layman's terms, when you're talking about financial assurances, we're trying to maintain enough currency or value to be able, for our people to come in and reclaim what has been disturbed and cover costs. So that's financial assurance. So if there's seventy-five acres untouched, still stabilized with vegetation on it, there's no need to reclaim it.
Another thing on the financial assurance and the permit fees, the smaller that they are, the smaller their permit fees are, and the smaller their financial assurance. So if they're permitted for a hundred and six and they open up the whole thing right away, that's not a very smart move. One, 'cause you have to deal with that whole site, but the other thing is if you reclaim it as you go, you keep your permit fees and your financial assurance cost down.
Because easy figuring, you said at forty-five hundred, forty-five hundred dollars per acre, forty-one acres of, that'd be the two wash, the one, the wash plant, the site, and the others would be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but the, the entire site would be seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
I keep, yeah, I keep track of six point two million dollars.
Okay, that's just, just curious.
Yeah, it's, it's not cheap. Yeah.
I don't know if you mentioned that the burms are included in that.
Yes, the, yeah, the burms are included too. So burms, road, anything that, anything that's not in that final plan, that final map, or in the narrative, if it's not there, I'm counting that. But yeah, that's a good thing, their burms too are counted. Yep. Next, go ahead.
Eric Nelson, eleven five eleven Eisenhower Drive. I heard in the presentation that, um, Highway V is going to be reconstructed by the county, and Cooley will upgrade it to Highway X's level of construction, and probable date would like, maybe, uh, in about a year's time. How will the truck traffic move at that time as the county reconstructs V? Because I'm just curious about the route, because that has impact on the people inside the room.
That's a great question for Highway.
Yeah. Highway has to deal with that on a pretty regular basis when they especially take down a, a major highway or a, a county highway trunk like that. They would do it typically like they would any other highway construction. They're gonna outline a detour route, and they're gonna maybe only do one lane, one directional, so the other lane can still be used. Those are great questions for the county highway department, we can't answer those completely, but-
Is it the wear and tear on the other, if there's an alternative route that would take out some of those wider-
It would, it would be considered and how they would make that decision.
And Roland Hawk was here at that last meeting that I was at, he would be the, he's the highway commissioner, he'd be the guy to ask, so his name is Roland Hawk.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next, yeah?
I have three questions. Um, I wanna see the slide with the flo- floculents, the name of the floculents, that went kinda
Can we also have a copy of the, electronic copy of the presentation?
Yeah.
If Pete makes a public record request, yes.
That'd be great.
Yep, then the public record request, the form, Pete, I can email it to you, um, and then just fill it out, and I can get this to you, not on a pro and all. Is that the one you wanted, or the seed data sheets?
Yeah, and so when you're chucking the well water, so that's the other question I have. When you're chuck, I, I wanna see the wells that you're chucking in that quarter of a mile.
The monitoring wells?
Yeah, the monitoring wells.
The monitoring wells that they're testing are onsite.
Okay.
They're not offsite. However, all of the yellow dots that were around the neighborhood, Cooley Frack would be-
That's, that's not the ones that they're testing, that's just the ones that are in the area. And you guys may be able to talk as to which ones specifically, and maybe you contacted those people already, I don't know. Um, but the very first slide that had the yellow, um, dots, that wasn't necessarily saying, um, I'm gonna pull up the reclamation plan and get exactly what it says on the-
It's a, it said a quarter of a mile.
I know what.
So, basically what Cooley Frack is saying is, they're monitoring their wells, their monitoring wells onsite regularly. But they're also offering to residents around-
That one? Yes.
An opportunity to test their wells on a regular basis. If you're not on their list, I would think they would consider you as, if you're concerned about your well, they wanna make sure you got safe drinking water.
So the, the legend-
Yellow dots.
Yeah, the legend for that, it's resident and/or, um, portable well water. That's all it's said it's showing. It's not showing that's the people that they're gonna test, it's just saying, those are wells that are out there.
We offer to, what, within a quarter mile?
Okay, so anybody within a quarter mile-
Did anybody else want, I can leave this open too up here.
They're offering a free water sample on a regular-
So they're testing for those types of floculents, or, uh, as well as everything-
That's one of the parameters, there's a whole list of parameters, and maybe they can share that with you.
Okay, and then this is a question on solvency. So, you know, with the reclamation, let's say, there is a problem and they cannot finish, and so, the, we take the funds, like you had said, and I hear that you're only gonna do, is the state only, or the DNR only requires so much, and the seeds don't have to be what they have promised, how is, so that we're not gonna have-
We would, we would have to look at that at the time, because if there's a hundred-plus acre or eighty-eight acre lake that's planned, and five years into this, there, there's only been twenty acres disturbed, and it's just a little pool of water, I, you know, odds are, we're not gonna go all out on a wetland, you know, vegetation and so forth there. Um, but if they follow through what they plan on doing over the course of twelve to twenty years, they're telling us, they're gonna step up to the plate, they're gonna establish this kind of vegetation outlined in the plan. If they, if they picked up shop and left three years from now-
For example, completion, because their reclamation plan is when it's final. It's not final, it stopped right here. So once we get the, take, okay, from our corp council, that says bankruptcy's done, you guys do your thing, at that time, all of us would go out there, the engineers, the survey equipment, all that stuff, we'd all go out there and we'd come up with a whole new reclamation plan.
But I guess what you're asking specifically is, because they stated in that plan all these wetland species and so forth, is the county gonna stick with that? We have the flexibility to say, no, that's too expensive. We can stabilize the site with some of these native grasses and things like that, it's not, we're gonna go out there with Charlie's Lawn Mix. But we have that flexibility to make those adjustments. Our goal is to make sure that it is a usable site in some manner when it's done, that it's, there's no safety concerns there, there's no health risks, and that the site is stable. And that's what we would use those funds for. Uh, if there's leftover to enhance, funds left over to enhance, then we'd do enhancement. We're all about wildlife and enhancing stuff, but-
And so all the funds would go back into that parcel, doesn't get maybe out somewhere?
We can't, we can't pocket the funds and, you know-
It has to be used for reclamation.
Help supplement our budget, it has to be used on that.
The bankruptcy people have tried to take it already, 'cause we have, we have a statute-
We've had lawyers after reclamation money to settle claims and things like that.
The ones that we've, we've already, we're holding right now that we've seized, um, we would love to have that reclaimed already, like, at least going towards, but we can't use a penny of it, because we have all these other lawyers that are like, give us the money, give us the money. It's for reclamation.
Why are they all going bankrupt? Why are these going bankrupt?
Each company is different, and I'm not gonna speak for that company that did went bankrupt, but each company is different.
It's a, it's a vulnerable market, just like cranberry industry and some of the other industries, it's vulnerable. There's gonna be ups and downs, some naked, some known. There's no guarantees in life, we all know that, so.
Did we answer your three questions? Yeah, okay, next.
Anybody else?
I would, I would just like to say, um, one thing though. What we're gonna, we're gonna do is, every time one little area gets disturbed, we're gonna reclaim that right away, and as we move on to the next one, we're not gonna leave a whole bunch of this property unattended to. You're welcome.
I've got several, my apologies, but I've got a few here. Go with one?
Go with one first.
One first, I'll start there. You mentioned that there were sixty-seven mines in Wood County. How many of them are wet frac sand processing plants?
Um, for sure, one, the other one has a wet plant onsite, um, like, and it's a port, uh, two, I'm thinking aloud here, there's two.
Not that many.
No, no. But we don't, we don't have a lot of the frac sand sites in Wood County. So out of our sixty-seven, most of them are the gravel pits. Um, there's a couple of the hard rock cores that we have too. We don't have a lot of frac sand sites. Like, out in the western part of the state, they have a lot more of the sand, they have a lot more of the, the stuff that they want.
Understand.
So in Wood County, I would say we probably have three off the top of my head that I can think of.
Out of sixty-seven, okay.
Yeah, and they're not, and so frac sand sites, I bet we have maybe eight to ten actual frac sand sites. Not all of them are operational either.
Something to add to that, keep in mind, is that, so, we have sixty-seven mines in a county that are actively permitted, but some of those are just, you know, sand and gravel type operations, but there's a lot of them that were, that were mining their material and taking it to either Carbo Ceramics, Completion Minerals, or Panther Creek, which were processing centers set up in Marshfield. So we didn't have a count on the mom and pop shops taking their sand to these, to these plants, okay? But if you think about a frac sand operation, it's nothing more than a much larger sand and gravel operation. The difference is, is they're washing that product to get the desirable gradation of product that they're looking for that's marketable. And the floculent and the separation and the washing process, that's the only difference between them and a sand and gravel pit. They're washing the fines off of this stuff, and they're getting a granular product when it's done. Is there groundwater contamination concerns? Is there concerns with this flo- floculent? We've checked into all that stuff. Obviously, groundwater is a very minimal concern of contamination. The floculent product is used on a regular basis, even with wastewater treatment facilities that send drinking water our way through piping. It's a safe product. The likelihood of contamination, unless there was some kind of a spill out there of chemicals like diesel fuels or something like that, would be extremely minimal. But from the standpoint of your question there, you know, how many actual wash plants do we have? This is fairly new to Wood County, so, you know, two or three.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, other requests, similar requests for this, in Wood County and/or in the town of Rock? Any other plans on your desk right now?
For industrial sand mines in the town of Rock?
Correct. Thank you. Are you aware of the recommended changes that were outlined by the, you know, the, the ad hoc committee, ESMIAC committee? Are you aware of those, and have any of those concerns expressed, expressed by that committee been implemented into the current version of the reclamation plan?
Never heard of them.
Never heard of them, so they're not addressed, okay?
I've never heard any of them.
No, I know, I, I'm-
No.
Okay, thank you. The piles themselves, where in the reclamation plan does it identify they're gonna be kept wet? So we don't have the dust or the silica sand type of scenario that, that a lot of us are concerned about?
That would be the industrial air quality guy, that Jared Nelson, he would be the one that's in charge of the air permit in-
So not Wood County, or he's a member of Wood County?
He's a DNR employee.
He's a DNR employee.
Yep.
He would be a state employee, but he, most DNR folks have a region that they cover.
He would be this right here.
Okay, so again, it's, like you pointed out, you only have that small mine reclamation, there's a lot of other parts and pieces of this puzzle that are concerning and have been raised as concerns for the residents of town of Rock. Um, I guess other questions I have is-
Can I interrupt you before you go on to the next question?
Absolutely.
Um, for the air with the dust blowing off, have the residents called us? Absolutely. Have I say, hey, go get your water trucks out there, there's blowing sand, we're getting calls? And they get out there? Yes, that we can do.
Yep.
Um, and that, a lot of companies have done, um, and because we're county, not just because we're county, they listen and they say, 'cause sometimes you can't get ahold of the DNR people because they cover eight, nine, twelve counties.
Yeah, and to prevent that scenario, we've recommended that the, either it's indoors or there's a, some type of sprinkling system on top of these piles, so you don't ever have to get that phone call. So we're trying to be proactive with that, with the recommendation.
Which we appreciate, but if, if it doesn't happen like that, and we do get calls, we do follow up on it. Same thing with like, the sand on the roads. Do we have jurisdiction over a highway? No, but can I make a call and be like, hey, Jimmy, get out there with your thing, we got sand on the road? And they go out and do it.
Okay.
So that, uh, we can work with that.
Yeah, and you've, you've done a great job on the presentation, I don't mean a, a B W Downer here, but there's a lot of questions and concerns that are still out there. Um, I think I have a few more, if you bear with me, I appreciate it. In regards to the heavy metals concern that has been raised, I know the DNR was supposed I know the DNR was supposed to study this in 2016. For whatever reason, it was an unfunded study that hasn't been completed. And the state of Wisconsin, in my opinion, has not done a, a lot to determine whether the heavy metals in this processing plant system is really going to contaminate our water. Do you have any feedback or any data on, on the heavy metals concern or, or lack thereof?
That would be a longer question.
Thank you, I thought so.
She's, her quote is, "The jury is still out." So, the DNR does not know what the potential harmful effects from heavy metals are from this kind of mining. So, that is where she stands as of right now, as of about a month ago.
Okay. And one of the things that I guess I was hoping to hear, and you did, Tracy, you touched on, on many of them. We were trying to compare and contrast the old version one versus, you know, CFS two point, or three point O. Uh, and is there, if, you know, if the presentation doesn't have them all in there as far as the changes, to help us not have to go through again, this four-hundred-and-thirty-five-page document?
It's a big one.
It certainly is. If you can identify somehow in another document what those specific changes are, that would certainly be extremely helpful. It may, you know, may help us...
There's a four-page letter that we drafted to them of every single thing that we wanted done. Make a public record request, and I can get to you.
Awesome, okay, we, that, we'll certainly take a look at that as well. Um, quarter-mile testing, you kinda addressed, you already addressed that. You identified that, um, the money's gonna be held until the, the, the reclamation is done. And what, what do you call done? Because I asked that question, because a lot of the flockens, and flocculents and the heavy metals do not leach into the groundwater for several years afterwards. But if they reclaim it, you give them the money, and all of a sudden, we have wells five, ten, fifteen years later that are contaminated, because it leaches through the subsurface, the topsoil, which they take away, that's basically the filter, and all of these things get to our groundwater. I guess, what financial liability does the company have? Or what steps can the county take at that point, once you've given back all the money for this mining?
You're, uh, so, think about this. You're, you're talking about just a disturbed site. You're gonna notice these things with contamination when you've got a disturbed site. So, if it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen during the operation.
I beg to differ.
When you start to look at reclaiming a site, you're re-establishing topsoil, you're re-establishing vegetation, you've removed any foreign stuff, that's any soil that's potentially contaminated and used it for reclamation, the likelihood of that is pretty, pretty low. Now, if you start getting into the non-Ferris metallic mining sites, which we do not have any of in Wood County, which is a whole different ballgame, which is getting into the territory you're talking about, where shelf life on this stuff could be fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years, that's a whole different ballgame. We don't get into that. However, we just recently adopted a non-Ferris metallic mining ordinance if anybody ever prospects in Wood County or wants to open one of those things up in Wood County. You're kinda crossing over to a different category of mining. With the gra- sand and gravel deals, we don't get into a whole lot of this heavy metal contamination stuff, it's just not there. Uh, it's a different process, it's a different mining, type of mining. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to dis- account your concern, but I'm just saying, we're not dealing with that kind of mining. Um, it's not a big issue.
Well, I, I say that because I had a conversation with Mr. Dustman, who is Cooley Frac Sands contracted hydrogeologist. He said, and I have the date in title, he said, that if there was going to be an issue with the flocculent, that it would take ten years approximately, or more, to leach into the groundwater. That's why I made the comment. Okay.
We, to address your question, I think you're asking us if, once we sign off and it meets our criteria, can we hold financial assurance for ten, fifteen, twenty years?
That's such a good question.
The answer is no. The reason I'm saying no is because we had a site, and we, the landowner asked us, can you hold financial assurance for five years? I don't think we can, so what I did is I went to corp counsel. Our corp counsel interpreted NR 135 and said, no. So, until my corp counsel says I can hold it, I'm saying no.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that, I mean, that's what I was saying.
Our hands are kinda tied.
No, I understand, and again, I understand you're just one small part of the, of this puzzle here. Uh, one final question for me. Um, you identified that all the, um, the fines, I guess you call it, the, the material that's not being sold is gonna be staying on-site, so it's not gonna be trucked off-site. But also, no other fines from another area is gonna be coming in to be processed or replaced?
Not necessary, not necessary.
Okay, that's why I have a question, just to clarify. There's that truck traffic coming in too.
In some cases with mines, you do have material coming from another site to make up a shortfall of fill.
That's why.
In this case, because the ultimate end result is gonna be a lake, they're gonna basically shape the excavation to more gentle slopes and stabilize them. There's gonna be very, there's probably, the likelihood of any foreign material other than what's generated on-site gonna be at this particular site, because its end product is gonna be a big lake.
So, there's no stipulation on trucking material into this site for the reclamation plan?
If you have a truck coming back already, and it's either gonna be empty or full, and it can be full to help with reclamation, they're gonna fill it up. If they need it. If they don't need it, then it can come back empty, but if you're already running that...
Yeah, but I'm, I'm saying they could, there are other sites out there. There's other material coming from different sites that could be trucked there and utilized there. I'm just trying to get an idea of the truck traffic, on the location, you know, the route of traffic. We understand the trucks leaving the site are going that way. What's the site, what's the impact to the roads on trucks coming into the site from other locations?
Well, well, think about it. Let's, let's use Completion Minerals on Marshfield, for example. They're out of business right now, we can talk about them, right? Okay, so, they were trucking stuff from mom-and-pop shops to the processing plant, okay? So, they're taking a, a load of material. They're bringing back a load of the washed fines that are useless to them. It's not a marketable product, it's used in reclamation. So, you get a lot of that. You're gonna return a load, because you're not gonna waste, you're not gonna waste fuel in that truck.
It is, it may not be marketable for them.
It's not like it's a toxic product that they're bringing back.
But it has impact on roads, I'm just trying to get a, get a bigger picture on, on...
It may not be marketable to them, but as far as reclamation, it's awesome. Like, that's what we want, bring it back in, use it, reclaim some of it. That's, I mean, that, that's how the whole, the whole market works.
And we'd much, much rather see, uh, a sand or a silty material coming back in than wood and a bunch of old construction material, because, believe it or not, that is an acceptable fill material from DNR standpoint. There's only certain ones that fall under, you know, hazardous waste criteria that have to be landfill. There's a lot of garbage that can end up in these things. So, the, the more native the stuff is coming in, the better.
Did you have any other questions?
Um, I don't know, I guess it's more of a comment about, like, long-term effects from flocculents and heavy metals and things that we just simply, correct me if I'm wrong, we just don't have the long-term studies to be able to conclusively say yes or no.
Correct.
So, that is a really big issue with, um, you know, reclamation, if they go out of business. You know, I mean, I've, I've known mining companies that communities are dealing with the effects thirty years later. And the communities, the taxpayers are the ones who have to deal with that cleanup. So, this is a really, really big concern for...
And I, I whole, wholeheartedly, I'm, I'm a native of Wood County, you know...
We're taxpayers too.
We're taxpayers, we have the same concerns you do with our drinking water. Um, I live in a dairy area, and I have concerns with, you know, runoff into my pond and groundwater and everything else. Well, guess what? The bottom line is, is that in NR 135, which we are entailed to administer, there isn't a word in there about follow-up on flocculent and what we can do with future contamination occurs. Our job and our responsibility is to make sure that that site is reclaimed properly, it's put back into a productive use, that it is not an environmental concern at the time it is reclaimed and that it's stable. We can't, you know, hold money back and hold these people responsible for something that could or may never happen, or it could. That is something that, if you have concerns with that, I would greatly steer you towards following up with DNR and research on it to find out what long-term effects of it are. We surely don't know what the long-term effects of it are.
Many of us have.
Yeah, and I guess, so we have a culture that's, go ahead and do it, we're gonna wait till a bunch of people die, or, you know, a bunch of negative impacts happen, and then we're gonna go back and...
We're dealing, we're dealing with a part of the county right now, in Southwood County, where forty-two percent of the wells are testing high in nitrates. It's a major, major concern. And a lot of people can point fingers at ag or whatever, but it's a sandy part of the county, and it, stuff moves through the soil very fast. It's a real problem. There's not an easy solution for it. And it's one of those things that some management changes, land uses have to change. I mean, we, these people started businesses seventy-five years ago. So, I hear where you're coming from, but these are just things that we can't address.
We hear you, we hear you concerned, and that's why our careers are in conservation like that. I mean, like, we hear your concern, we get it. We all live here too, they live here too. Um, that's why our career is our conservation, 'cause we clearly care about it. So, we hear you.
Yeah, I know you do, you guys are us.
Melanie Carter, ninety-five, oh-two Fairhaven. A couple of questions about the financial assurances. It sounds like in the case of the bankruptcy law, you might be holding on to funds, it sounds like there's still legal, um, challenges to your ability to retain those funds. So, have those legal questions been settled by the courts?
No, uh, we do have a good lawyer.
Okay.
Um, and they're gonna, they're still gonna try and come after funds.
There's always gonna be legal.
Yeah, there's always gonna be legal, we can't get around from that, but...
Yeah, but what is the bankruptcy court's position on the county's ability to keep those funds?
We have, we have a signed, um, letter of intent that that money is to be used for that purpose. We have first dibs at it. It'd be pretty, pretty hard to fight that in court. It is intended for a sole purpose. It's not intended to pay back debt to companies. They, the company that puts up this financial assurance does not have access to seize those funds or go after those funds if they start going into financial turmoil. That money is earmarked to us for a specific purpose. So, I'm not saying they ain't gonna try.
Of course they're gonna try.
They're all gonna try.
Yeah, but it, it sounds like there is still some legal questions that have to be answered there. Like, I know that you believe that you're entitled to those funds, but from the town's perspective...
Peter Castenholz is our corp counsel, he'd be able to answer that one better than what we're doing.
Okay. Um, the other question I had was, can you go over again what the financial assurances can be made up of? You mentioned something about funds.
Yep, um, NR 13540 is all about financial assurance. Um, it has different, um, different types of financial assurance. For instance, it can be a letter of credit, it can be a bond, it can be a net worth test, and there's a whole bunch of criteria to meet the net worth. Um, they can actually write out a check. Um, a lot of what happened in the last probably, I'd say, five years is the banks realized, hey, these people need financial assurance, we're gonna jack up the price for a, a bond or a letter of credit. So, instead of paying an extra ten percent on, you know, a thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, they literally write a check for us, and we have a different line item in our budget specifically for that site. That's an option. But NR 13540 is all specifically for financial assurance, so any one of those criteria that they, that they meet, worth.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, a couple of questions, you're listening with this financial assurance. Uh, you're doing all this testing and stuff, what happens, uh, okay, the wells start going dry around, okay? Or all of a sudden, you get pollutants? The person have the, uh, how, how, is that addressed in any way? Or is that just still your problem, if you got that problem?
If the wells go dry, that's gonna be a D, and I don't, I'm not trying to push it off, but I'm just trying, uh...
I mean, high-capacity wells do suck things dry.
Yeah, and that would be a DNR question. Um, the people, and I know you're getting upset, but this is, that's the well, that's the water stuff up there. I can't answer that, I don't administer that, I don't know what their regulations are. I don't know what their specs are to, you know, fill out a permit or to approve a permit. But the DNR people that issue the permits would be able to, this is just reclamation. Yep.
Of the sixty-seven mines in Wood County right now, how many have, like, festival?
Um, I would say the, the ones with the wet plants. So, those two or three, this off the top of my head, uh, those two or three, I probably, I know for sure one does. Um, the other one, I think, uses mostly surface water, but not, I think it's just sur... I would say probably two, for sure. But the third one may have one that I just haven't found yet, but I'm for sure it's two of them that have wet plants. Any other questions? Yeah?
What is the setback from adjacent landowners, the distance?
Great question. NR 135 specifically doesn't have a setback.
So, they can go right up through the property line?
According to NR 135, yes. You have town zoning, so you're a step ahead of some of the other towns in Wood County that don't, so it's whatever your zoning says. It's, NR 135 specifically doesn't state a setback, because they wanted it to be to either county zoning or town zoning. I have fought them on that more than I can tell you. But it specifically doesn't have a setback. And I hate it.
But with the Cooley Frac Plan that's been supplied to us, they have established a buffer, um, above and beyond what we would ever require.
Do you know what that is specifically?
Do you remember on hand what your buffer is?
It's, uh, part of the cup negotiation right now, but, uh...
This is a figure eight, and I have it up here. Um, so, the blue line is the, the setback for, hold on. The blue line is a three-hundred-foot outside property boundary, and that's for, like, navigable streams and things like that, you have to be three-hundred feet. Um, and that's a plan in zoning, that's another department in Wood County. So, that's another plan in zoning. They have been out to site to make sure that this right here was not a navigable stream. Um, so, they already determined that, and I do have the documentation that they were already out there and they already checked it out.
So, the yellow line represents a seventy-five-foot inside property buffer. So, they're setting a seventy-five-foot buffer.
Did, did you just say that, 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 have there are negotiations currently at all?
Well, it's, it's part of the cup agreement. Uh, it's really something that's being dealt with at the town level. So, we've, uh, initially planned, um, put a seventy-five-foot setback around the property, you know, the whole boundary, but then along county D, it's like a hundred fifty there. And, uh...
So, they're negotiating, they're negotiating that with their conditional use permit at the township level. We really don't have a lot of say at it, because NR 135 doesn't even establish a setback.
I agree with it.
I know you don't wanna hear that, but...
I hate it, but there's nothing I can do about it.
And you can't do anything about it, because state statutes currently don't allow you to.
I have to follow NR 135.
Yeah, I understand that. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Cole.
Cole Pancricks, one zero seven one nine, US, how many times? Um, conditional use permit, uh, two-part question. Can this permit be amended throughout the process at all? And what is the process of the amendment process?
Great question. Um, reclamation plans can be amended. Um, if it's a big amendment, like, if you are at, like, five acres, and all of a sudden, you're gonna go to twenty-five acres, then it's gonna be, all right, get a whole new plan, like, do the whole thing, hold public notice, all that, the whole thing over again. If it's a minor, um, adjustment or amendment to the plan, then, and, and we make that determination as a staff. If it's a, if it's, for me, if it's, if I'm a neighbor, I wanna know what this is happening, then I'm gonna send it out for public notice. And it'll be a whole amendment, just like we're doing right now. Good question.
So, good, yeah, like, an amendment that they, you know, were planning a sequence of, of phases that they're gonna do. They decide, well, phases twelve and thirteen and fourteen have our best product. We were gonna do that on the tail end, but we wanna get at that first. Now, things like that, um, we will make modifications.
Yeah.
Additional to that question, if you determine that, uh, amendment is large enough, would it be noticed?
Yes.
In the paper, it'd be another hearing process if they would so choose?
Okay.
Another question on the reclamation at the end, the end of, I will never see it in twenty years, but at the end, is the site clean, the building's gone, is it back to its natural state completely? Is that all part of that?
The only thing that's gonna be left on there is that paved road that, oh, I think I went the wrong way. Right there.
There.
That paved road is going to stay in place.
But buildings, everything will be...
It's all gone. And that's what the financial assurance covers. So, if it's not gone, the county's going to seize the money, and we're gonna take it off ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, as, as the gentleman sitting here in the front mentioned, you know, when they're, they're looking forward to the day where they can sit down with the township and negotiate and talk about what the final end use of this lake would be, whether they enhance it more with a shelter house there, some picnic tables, you know, for the township to make it a little more, um, resident-friendly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so, at the end, it's all reclaimed, it's done, and whether the county ends up with it, your town, or the state, or whoever ends up with it, the reclamation plan, once it's done, that's final. So, if the, that entity decides to do some changes, that's still possible to be done, correct?
They would have to go through the process of redoing a new plan.
It's, it depends on what changes you're talking about. If they're just gonna put up a picnic shelter, we're out. shelter, we're out. If they wanna say, you know what, we're gonna dig this whole area out more than your excavating and not metallic mineral, you're gonna come back to us for another permit at that point.
I'm referring to where I guess, the whole site is reclaimed, it's done, you, you give the money back. It, it's a done deal. Hypothetically, Wood County took it over and they say, okay, we're gonna put a park in here, or campsite, or whatever, and they're gonna do surface work. I'm just making it clear, I think I know the answer, but it's not restricted to what they can do because the, the reclamation's already done in that mine site. This is beyond that. This is twenty-five years from now, or whatever.
Right, right. The reclamation would not set restrictions for future development.
That's what I'm asking.
But the township could, if they have some zoning that would apply in any way, shape, or form. Any other questions?
We will stay up here too, if you guys, you know, some people wanna get going, or some people are like, okay, I don't wanna ask in front of the whole group. We'll stay up here too. And the, the actual plans here, um, I can, you'll set it up on the counter if people wanna flip through it, I...
Uh, just a quick question. It's related to the reclamation plan, but it's probably more towards the board and Pete. What's the plan moving forward as far as meetings about this and/or the other?
I appreciate this, Jim. This is a reclamation plan. I'm here as a citizen watching this just the same as everyone.
No, I understand, but there was a...
And I appreciate that.
Wasn't there, was there a closed session meeting about...
Yes, there was. There was a closed session meeting. It was noticed on all of our website, on the doors, everything else. Closed session. Was a closed session meeting. I don't have the form to read exactly what it was, which I should, to state, no further action is taken. The meeting was a closed session. We returned to open session. We adjourned. That was it, ended the meeting.
Okay. No, and I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to pin anybody on a closed session here.
Yeah, you are.
I just, no, not at all. What I'd like to know is just what the plan is moving forward. I think that's a really good question.
The plan that's moving forward at this point is going, sitting down with the attorneys, that the attorney has, that the township has retained, as well as the Cooley Frac Sand LLC, Carboceramics, and that is where we're at. That's, that's exactly where we're at. It's still in the planning stages, sorry. I wish I could give you more.
No, I didn't.
That's where we're at.
Just excuse me if something, Pete, that I didn't...
Can you just say the reclamation, because I got two kids at babysitters that I...
So if we don't have any other questions, um, and again, you can catch us on the way out if, if you do.
Just a comment. You did a fine job on the reclamation, but I feel bad that there isn't some of the other people that can't answer any questions. We can't call a hundred people to ask this, ask that. You, you get no, no, no vision of what's happening. It's poor.
And that's understandable. I mean, we can't, we can't answer all the questions because we don't administer some of those rules. We just don't have that, the, the authority to do that.
And, and we get, and I appreciate that, because I did put a lot of time into that. And most of it, yes, I pulled out of the plan. Um, but that, I spent a lot of time putting it together.
I'm familiar with some of that stuff. It was, it was nice to have you explain it, but I just bothered by it. All the stuff that can't be answered by use.
It bothers us too.
It bothers us too, because we, we can't, and I go out on site and I'm like, hmm. So, believe me, we, we hear your concerns. We feel your concerns. We live that every day.
Well, thank you all for coming home. Um, this is the first time we've really done a formal presentation like this. We knew there was gonna be a lot of questions, so we spent a little extra time trying to get prepared. Hopefully, we addressed most of your questions. I know we didn't have answers for some of them. I apologize for that, but, um, yeah, thank you for coming.
I do have business cards too.